Good evening and welcome to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for July 5, 2016. Hoping everybody had a nice Fourth of July holiday. If we could please note the role.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Luce.
Here.
Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Mayor Mars.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Mokel.
Here.
Thank you. Let's stand for the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's move on to item number three, the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, subtractions, modifications?
Mr. Mayor, the only addition is, is that with 4D1, we have the resolution actually on the table for councils. For me.
Nothing has changed outside of the memo outline, right?
That's correct, sir.
And then anything else? Councilmember Whiting?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Oh, Councilmember Mokel, second. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries approval of the agenda. Next item, consent agenda. And are there any deletions, corrections? Councilor Mokel?
I'd like to take off 4B1.
4B1, alright. And others? Councilmember Lehman?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, removing 4B1.
I did want to talk about one other one.
Councilor Luce?
Which one's that?
That was, uh... C5.
4C5?
Correct.
Okay, um, there's a motion on the table with no second.
Let me modify that motion if I may.
Okay.
Approve the consent agenda with the two items removed.
4C5 and standing with 4...
4B1.
4B1?
Yep.
4B1?
4B1, yep.
4B1 and 4C5. I'll second that. Is that acceptable then? Good. We have a motion on the table and I apologize. Did we have a second on that? Mike, oh, you were, that was worth your second with a friendly. All, further discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you so much. Moving right ahead then, we will move to 4B1 donation, acceptance of a donation. And Joy Sutton will present.
I don't think Joy is here.
Okay.
Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to, Ryan Itchmanis, Fire Department, introduce Nico Spain, area manager for CenterPoint. She's here to give us a check for $975 for the purchase of two gas monitors for the fire departments used residence and businesses in the city. I see you've got a lot left. I'll let you say the rest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hello again, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Again, I'm Nico Spain from CenterPoint Energy. The Community Partnership Grant Program offers an opportunity for CenterPoint Energy to partner with cities that we serve. We have partnered with communities supporting our shared commitment for safety while delivering safe, reliable natural gas for over 145 years. Since 2003, the program has exceeded $1.38 million in donations and helped support the funding of nearly 700 projects and communities throughout the company's service area. Through the grant program, we are able to serve cities... Through the grant program, we are able to help cities leverage local funds to purchase needed safety equipment or support safety projects that are important to your community. So I'm pleased to present the City of Shakopee with a Community Partnership Grant for $975 that will be used to purchase Q-Rate 3 wireless gas monitoring equipment.
On behalf of Shakopee, thank you very, very much, and this is an important step. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Whiting?
Just a quick question on those gas monitors. Is that for the fire departments to wear or is it to leave in a stationary at places?
It's a, like a foregas monitor. So we bring them in of carbon monoxide alarms, natural gas smells, multiple different things, sewer gas, things like that. So they're on the trucks.
Okay.
So we try to have two on each truck and then we can bring them in. You always want to have one and then a backup. And they last about three to five years. They just kind of wear out, so.
Great.
Yeah, we're due for a couple more.
A foregas analyzer. Is that like the automotive industry foregas analyzer?
Well, it does...
Hydrocarbons and...
Carbon monoxide.
Monoxide.
Sewer gas, natural gas. We have one that's HCN, hydrogen cyanide, which is kind of a big killer going on now. So it's similar, but a little different.
Smelling different things.
Yeah.
And do they plug in or are they, what do they operate on?
It runs off a battery. So we keep them in the truck always charged up. And one of them's, like, O2 is one of the sensors that is on there as well. So you can pick up a ton of different gases, but it might affect it different. It's, maybe it shows up on the HCN side, but it's not HCN. You've got to kind of cross-reference a few things, but yeah.
We appreciate the donation. Thank you.
Anything else?
Uh, Councilwoman Whiting?
Well, I'd like to make a motion to accept the CenterPoint Energy donation to the Shakopee Fire Department in the amount of $960. Thanks. $975, okay.
I have a motion and a second by Councilor Mokel, and I apologize. Councilor Luce had a question, comment?
Yeah, I was just curious. Are they, you able to find the source or just tell what gas you're dealing with?
It depends. We don't, on the fire side, don't want to always say we know what the source is. So if we get called, let's say we get called to a CO alarm at a residence, we're going to get there with our monitors. If we pick up CO, carbon monoxide in the residence, we call CenterPoint Energy. They got, they, we're not service repair people. We can just tell that there is a problem, go through, sort of say, we think it's this, and then their people come in and either fix it or say it is or isn't. So their monitors are a little more sensitive than ours, but I don't know how to work on a furnace. Couldn't tell you whether it's truly burning accurately or not, so.
Yeah, I'm just curious on that.
Yeah, thank you.
Can we get a picture? Well, let's vote and then we'll take a picture. So, motion on the table, no further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the donation has been accepted. We'll take a photo up.
Who ruins the camera?
It's usually cheap tape. I've got an iPhone. You want an iPhone or?
Yeah, you can take it. Heidi can take it. Jeff is going to do it. Not very good photographer.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
See you, yeah, see you later.
Ooh, that one is purple.
Not good.
Yep. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
See ya.
Alright, so, let's get back to the previous motion, which was approval of the consent, which 4B1 was off and we took notice of that. We have a motion, a second for the modified consent. Now, before we vote, we'll read the modified consent. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The consent agenda items for July 5 of 2016 are as follows. 4B2 adopts Resolution Number 7741, which renews a joint powers agreement with the Minnesota Internet Crimes Against Children's Task Force and the state of Minnesota. 4B3 declares five forfeited vehicles held by the police department as surplus and authorizes their proper sale or disposal. 4C1 adopts Resolution Number 7746, which authorizes the appropriate city officials to enter into a joint powers agreement with Scott County, Carver County, and the City of Burnsville for fleet management software collaboration. 4C2 adopts Resolution Number 7745, which accepts bids and awards a contract for the 2016 sanitary sewer lateral pipe rehabilitation project, Number 2015 TAC4, including a contingency of 5% and approves an extension agreement with SEH Incorporated for construction engineering services. 4C3 authorizes staff to utilize the repurchase agreement with AgPower Enterprises Incorporated on Unit Number 132, a 2014 John Deere 5085 tractor in the amount of 600, excuse me, 6,400, to be paid from the Capital Equipment Internal Service Fund. 4C4 accepts the quote from Gopher State Seal Coat Incorporated for the 2016 Trail Seal Coat Project in the amount of $39,303 to be paid from the park maintenance budget. 4D1 adopts Ordinance Number 937, which amends City Code 30.08 criminal history background checks. 4F1 approves the payment of bills and electronic transfers in the amount of $2,443,747.99. 4F2 determines that the city will not waive the monetary limits on tort liability as established by Minnesota Statute 466.04. 4F3 approves the application and grants a temporary on-sale liquor license to the parish of St. Yocum and Anne, 2717th Avenue East for July 29 through July 31, 2016. And 4F4 authorizes the mayor to sign a response on behalf of the city regarding the SMC's application to move the identified parcels into trust status.
Thank you very much. We have a motion, a second. Modified consent has been read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Item number five, now I'd like to call on any involved citizen that would like to come before this council and discuss an item not on our agenda tonight, not on the agenda. Please come forward, sign in, state your name. Seeing none, we'll move ahead then to item number 6A, public hearing cable franchise, and I believe that was off.
That's correct, Mayor. We would request that this be continued until July 19, the next scheduled meeting of the city council.
So these extensions or continuations are date-specific. We had continued to today's meeting. We're not quite ready.
Yes, sir.
Just, Councilwoman Lehman?
Make a motion to continue that cable franchise public hearing until July 19.
Second.
I have a motion, a second by Councilor Luce. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving to item number seven, business removed from consent. We did take care of one, but we're now, we're on to 4C5. And Councilor Luce?
Yeah, my question's for Public Works Engineer. Your people estimated it at 60,000. Our low bid comes in at 65, and the next only other bid was 114. Is this a situation where they're filled out for the season and they're just throwing numbers out, or?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilor Luce? No, actually, the second bidder, usually they're pretty competitive, but it is kind of the time of year when they can fit things in. We give them a pretty good schedule to fit it in. Usually they're close. The second bidder did make a mistake on their bid and acknowledged that, but, so normally they're closer.
Now, when you say the second bidder, the high bidder, I hope?
Yeah, the high bidder. The other one is close. I mean, we usually estimate pretty tight on something like this. Usually we're within. And we did save quite a bit of money on seal coating this year, I think, close to $140,000. So we definitely have money in the budget.
Yeah, it just was, it's almost doubled, so I'd just curious.
Yeah, no, it was a mistake. It's, usually, the two minutes roadways in Northwest go at it pretty good.
Councilmember Lehman?
Just curious, what's the life of these trails, or are these, what's the average life of a trail? And then are these different than the average trail?
Well, these are heavily used park trails, and when they were initially constructed with the Upper Valley Drainage Ditch, that was in the early 90s, so you can figure they're at least 23 years old. Some of the construction wasn't as good as perhaps I think we get now. I think we should be able to get 25 to 30, but again, trails are kind of the level of service is, okay, how smooth is the surface, the usability, the potential heaving and, you know, potential falls or whatever. We have to look at safety and, and there's other factors and then usability. I mean, we, we look at it, it should last, some of our trails, because they're only eight and a half feet wide, they won't crack for a long time because the width is so much narrower than a street. So we can usually get, should be able to get 25 to 30. And we've been more aggressive on our seal coating too and crack sealing.
Councilmember Luce?
How big a problem is it to get unauthorized use of a vehicle on them? I've seen a few where they've had fertilizer trucks or something.
How, you mean, get a permit for that?
No, do you see much of that where that's unauthorized? Because that's got to be really rough on them.
I have seen it, hope, I haven't seen it a lot, but I have seen it.
Are they being tagged for that? Because I mean, they're breaking those roads, are those paths up?
I, I'm not the policeman, so I can't answer that. So I think if they're caught by the policeman, I would sure hope they would tag them.
And the police do drive down them. I live, I back up to it and the police do use them. And I have seen a moving van, maybe a little bigger, but coming out of the back of a walkout, but, you know, it is a quality of life. These ribbons of asphalt in our community are, we get a lot of bang for our buck out of them. Councilmember?
A lot of them we build to a standard for emergency access, secondary emergency access. So I don't know if that's just a norm for all of them or just the certain ones that are made for that purpose.
You know, for the most part, the toughest part of a trail is the construction of it, with all those trucks going over it to construct the trail. Then after that, I mean, most of the time when we're plowing a trail, it's usually frozen ground, usually. There might be some frost, but we have to be careful of that. Other than that, what usually happens is the trail will disintegrate or, you know, will go down the path of disintegration by environment, more environmental than structural. You'd be able to see the structural crack and then you can see a thermal crack. You can see the difference. We, we haven't seen a lot of structural damage.
Thank you. Anything else or make a motion?
Uh, let's see. Make a motion to move to accept the low quote and authorize staff to contract with Northwest Asphalt Incorporated for the 2016 Trail Reconstruction Project for the price of $65,296.90.
I have a motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Whiting, second. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Uh, we're going to go to 8A1, and we are going to have Mr. Reynolds, are you going to prep on this or are you going to, Mr. Jaffa going to come forward?
Yes, we have Mr. Jaffa here with the CDA, Scott County CDA. Council had requested approximately two and a half months ago to have Mr. Jaffa come in and give a brief overview on what his organization is up to, and so he is here to do that tonight.
Well, great. Thank you. Welcome.
See which one is working the best tonight. Good evening, city council members. It's been a while. I've been before you. I'm pleased to be here. Again, given the weather constraints and conditions and so on, I'm sure most of us are all anxious to get home to our families and hope our roofs are still on and our basements aren't flooded. But nonetheless, what I'm going to do is try to keep my remarks tonight brief, a little presentation on the history and background of the CDA, which used to be formerly the HRA, and then I want to leave some time for questions because that's usually the most important part of a presentation, is you lay out the roadmap, but then you circle back and try to catch any pothole questions that may have been missed. The information that you have in front of you is kind of a long and the short of my comments tonight. The colored version is more the long story. The small two-page summary kind of hits it. It's a snapshot. But before I begin with that, I just want to kind of briefly go back and maybe take a little historical circle to the relationship between the HRA slash CDA and the City of Shakopee going back a number of years. Approximately 20 years ago, we entered into a strong partnership to develop River City Center. It was a complicated matter. It took a lot of discussion on both sides. I've always said, I know your mayor, Mr. Mars there, and I go back quite a ways to his last term and even before, but there were compelling arguments on both sides. And we always realized that. In the end, one argument won out over the other, hence River City Center. To this date, River City Center is 100% full. It's a successful development. The master lease tenant is still with us. It's been close to 20 years. All the debt service requirements have been made. And I can go into a little bit more detail on how that whole package is put together, but hence, to say the City of Shakopee is a big partner in this. You own the land. You sold tax increment bonds to buy those two blocks, Blocks 3 and 4, clear those blocks, and then your EDA in effect leased that land back to the HRA so we could build River City Center. So you have a financial commitment in this that, to this date, has been very successful. I think your finance director, I haven't had a chance to visit with Darren. I'm hoping that he and Terry Galstead, my finance director, can get together at some point in the near future just to talk over a little of the history. But all the debt service requirements have been met, even during the hard time during the recession downturn. So we're very proud of that. A few years back, the CDA put about a half a million dollars in exterior work into River City Center to freshen it up to make it look a lot better, and we think it's a, it's a real contribution to the downtown area. Northridge Court, the other partner development, is 100% full. That too is another development with the city where we agreed to actually use some eminent domain powers that we had. You know, you have jurisdiction, we can have authority, but we were allowed to move ahead and clear an area right up on First Avenue for a city parking lot that is more widely used and open up Fuller Street. And the whole trade-off was the old sandbox, which became the lot for Northridge Court. Again, a very successful trade-off for all concerned. The third project underway here in Shakopee, as all of you have been watching as you drive by, is the Henderson. I'm happy to report that at the first pass, with those interested on the interest list, we have 70% reserved. And we are probably looking at an October 15 final CO. And the interesting thing, and I'm going to share this story with you, and I got this via our management company, there was an interest list that had close to 140 names on it, and then questionnaires were sent out to boil it down. And then they had a get-together at River City Center where they could come in, look at floor plans, and make reservations. I was told that the line actually exceeded out the door, right onto the sidewalk, that the community room was packed. And we are 70%, just about 70% reserved. The only left units are 15 one-bedrooms. And we expect on the next pass that that number is going to whittle down. So that's turning out to be a very highly successful development. Certainly, our builder is very happy. They're well on schedule. We haven't had any big hiccups with this development. And we're very proud that an underutilized piece of property next to the old St. Mary's Church is now being reutilized in this effort. Needless to say that a lot of the people that are signing up are senior citizens who are going to be putting their homes on the market, which means it'll be another affordable home for a family that can afford a home, but maybe not brand-new construction. So that's kind of how that cycle works. So we have a long history, going back a number of years. And what is Shakopee? Shakopee is the fastest-growing city in the county. Our first stop shop is now part of the CDA. It's become actually a department. There's a lot of information there. The handout that I have, and I'm just going to touch briefly on some of this information. In terms of the housing in Shakopee, Shakopee has the largest percentage of the CDA housing in comparison to the other communities throughout Scott County. It's probably, according to this latest statistic, 34% out of everything that we have. The Housing Choice Voucher Program, that alone, Shakopee has almost 261 now, or 45% of our entire allocation. This program brings in $4.8 million in housing assistance payments each year. And we believe that number is going to grow as Shakopee continues to grow in terms of those wanting to come here looking for rental housing. So who benefits from all this? The benefit is to your landlords, who are your citizens, your constituents. Because what they have is they've got a program where you've got screened applicants that can move in and rent from them and actually feel confident that the housing quality standards that are applied to each unit and the oversight given by the CDA Housing Specialist is there to support them. And so that program is probably the largest program that we have. There's two types of programs that we operate. One program is the project-based assistance. Project-based in its simplest form simply means the CDA owns the facility, manages the facility, and maintains the facility. So it's a full cycle. The tenant-based is where the private landlord accepts a voucher, which used to be part of what they called the Section 8 program. And in effect, the tenant winds up paying 30% of their income towards the rent. The subsidy covers 70%. Now, looking at the reality here, the CDA and the HRA, for all the years that we've been in business, it's more than just rooftops to us. We were one of the first agencies to participate in Operation Bootstrap many years ago. I think most of you remember Jack Kemp, the Housing Secretary, and I forget Kent Robbins, our Commissioner from Shakopee. I think he was, was it Reagan's administration or, it might have been Bush's.
I think it was Bush, but...
But, but Jack Kemp was the... But Jack Kemp was the former great quarterback and is the Secretary of Housing and Urban Development, initiated a program called Operation Bootstrap. And what Operation Bootstrap did is set up a program where people that were receiving this rental assistance through the voucher program could get into a program where they could work themselves off of subsidy and get into a homeownership program. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail on exactly how it works. I can only tell you that it works. Now, since that time, we have developed a very strong mortgage foreclosure prevention program that provides foreclosure counseling, Shakopee again being the biggest logically because you have a very large inventory of properties that certainly got hit very hard in 2008. Surprisingly enough, the Department of Housing and Urban Development also found that two other census tracts qualified because of the large number of foreclosures. You know what they were? Bell Plain and Elko New Market, which was quite a surprise. But the mortgage foreclosure program is also kind of a, sort of an afterthought of our Homebuyer Club program that we operate within our own agency. Over 41% of the graduates of that program, where they actually moved into homeownership, bought homes here in Shakopee, 39% of the entire program, or 105. Down payment grant assistance, over 39 families received assistance from Shakopee. Out of 39, 24 received assistance. So this is just a sampling of the programs that the Scott County CDA is involved in. Of course, we're very proud of the first-stop shop and the Economic Development Incentive Program, which is corridor readiness, TAP Grant Program, Technical Assistance Prevention or Technical Assistance Program, excuse me for that little flub. And as you well know, Shakopee is the recipient of one of those grants for your downtown study.
Thank you.
And again, you know, these are the types of efforts that, we've always been a believer that the whole is greater than the sum of its parts. In other words, collectively serving the entire county of Scott, not just one city, but certainly Shakopee with all the activities that have been going on. You know, clearly, there's just so much opportunity moving ahead into the future. So I'm going to end my going on here and maybe just open it up for questions, and we get into some specifics.
Questions of, Mr. Jaffa, I just want to say I think that there is a lot of pride in you and your organization here in Shakopee of what you've done over the last 20, 30 years here. I think that's to be commended. My comments are, I'm anxious to see the refresh of the Maxfield Study that you're doing because the demographics in Shakopee and the scale of housing and where those needs are, because I remember that program or that study a long time ago, and that actually helped guide your organization, and governments and developers looked at that as well. So that was a key one. Will that be available?
Yes, I figured that question was coming, and I am prepared. I actually got a peek behind door number three today. I don't want to go into a lot of detail, except to say that within the next two weeks, there will be a draft coming out because the entire county is involved, and housing is a huge issue because it relates to the jobs that are being created, where are people going to live, et cetera. So that being said, the draft will be out in two weeks, and another week or two to allow the cities to comment on that draft, and then we're going to go to a final version. And then we're going to be sitting down, my staff and I, and trying to work with Maxfield to figure out how we want the presentations to go. This was a very, very intense undertaking, the housing study. It covers the whole migrate, the whole pyramid of housing. Your senior housing, your affordable housing, your lots, your residential, I mean, on and on and on. It's very detailed. Scale was very instrumental, and their tech team bringing a lot of input into this. Also, there's a commercial industrial study that's going to be wrapping up, too. So there's two big studies that are going to be good guideposts for all the communities in Scott County. And again, I could have gone into 17 pages tonight. I thought, wait a minute, your people, your staff need to have time to comment and get back and forth. We don't have that far to go to get this thing done, but it's very close.
Other questions, comments? Counselor Whiting?
Mr. Jaffa, we've had some conversations about workforce housing in our community, and can you talk about how, you know, the Housing Choice Voucher Program, what are the differences between that and the workforce housing component that's out there right now, and a little more about the workforce housing portion of it?
Well, to start with, workforce housing, right now, I can tell you that the CDA Board is supporting two applications that have gone into the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency for consideration. The awards will be announced probably in October. Of course, one of them is MWF, which we've met with them, and we've given them our support through, it's a number of things that need to meet the criteria that the MHFA requires. It's a very competitive process. And in addition to that, we're supporting another application by Ron Clark, who built Mark, excuse me, built Village Commons Behind the Rainbow. Ron Clark, it's Pike Lake. It's going to be 68 units. The City of Prior Lake has committed some tax increment support for that. The CDA has committed support for that as well. Should both those applications be funded, that would be about, I'm guessing, probably another 130 units of family workforce housing for Scott County. So they're both very good applications. We're hoping both, you know, get the nod. Now, to your question about a Housing Choice Voucher, the Housing Choice Voucher Program, actually, those two projects, those developments, would accept voucher holders from the CDA because it would meet the threshold requirement of income qualifying, and that's very critical because right now, the rental market is very tight. So where are people going to go to rent? So until that loosens up, it's very critical that these developments have that ability. In addition, up by the Cub, another sand company development called Boulder Ridge, Counselor Whiting, that development got funded because we actually project-based some vouchers to that development, which got Sand Company enough points so they could do that development up there next to the Cub, and that's been very successful.
Further comment, I have a comment to you. A lot of out there in the world are in the, you know, the discussion about mental health and trying to capture that before something maybe bad happens, talking about the police intervention, and you go to the ER room, and they're not really equipped, or there isn't a bed. Is that any role of yours to play in that area? I know even at scale, there's been some, a small discussion about the mental health issue and how to even make an inroad there or make things better.
We've had discussions among our staff during our meetings about what can we do to better help address this issue. Of course, as you just pointed out, I mean, you've got your police, your fire, your first-line defenders, so to speak, the emergency rooms, and the reality that we have a transient population out there with mental illness is a real reality. I know we see that from time to time in our own agency, and what types of programs and financing packages are available to set up a facility to deal with that. It's a lot bigger than just a CDA. A CDA would be willing to partner with the CAP, the county. We do have some transitional housing that we do work with the county on, where we own the transitional housing, and the county provides caseworkers, but is it enough? The answer is no, but it's a very big problem. And certainly, we're willing to sit down with, you know, your police department and whomever the CAP to, you know, try to, what can we do? We're willing to take a chance.
Thank you. Further comments? Counselor Lehman?
Mr. Jaffa, we go back, what, 15 years, I suppose?
Maybe longer than that, Matt.
Maybe a little bit longer than that. Agreed sometimes, disagreed some others. The question that I have is the one that I get the most, and it's the residential property that's on the edge of losing their home, and their taxes keep going up and up and up, and they ask, well, my taxes are paying for somebody else's housing when I can barely afford my own. So are we creating a situation where we're making them, forcing them into this position? How do you balance that?
Well, you know, the question that you pose is a very broad one. You know, I get that, too. I guess maybe to just rewind a little bit, the CDA is not a taxing authority, per se, like, say, the county or a city would be, because we don't have general obligation powers. Small taxing authority that we have is based on existing market valuation with a fixed percentage point under state statute. And as you know, we are a creation of the Minnesota State Legislature, special law. So how do you balance that? It's a bigger question, really more for those that are responsible for setting taxes and tax rates and so on than it would be, say, for the CDA, because everything that we do gets poured back into the community in terms of services. And the logic behind a special benefits tax, just to put it in perspective, is as you grow as a community and that taxable market valuation grows, guess what else grows? Need. And that's why that formula is set where it is. And just take it a step further, our budget, which is roughly a little over $10 million annually, is made up of state, federal, and local funds mandated by state and federal laws through that special legislation. So the question itself has to be brought back to those that actually have taxing authority, which goes back to tax those very people you're talking about.
Right, which the county EDA, the city's EDA, city councils, all have taxing authority. And when they're using their taxing authority to take from one taxpayer to give to another taxpayer, this taxpayer over here tends, some of them, say, I'm having a hard enough time paying for my own stuff. I can't afford to pay for somebody else's stuff. And yet, they're forced to pay for somebody else's stuff, sometimes at the detriment of losing their own stuff. So it's a balancing act, for sure.
Well, thank you. Other questions, comments? Mr. Jaffa, I met with you several weeks ago. I know Counselor Whiting has met with you in the past. Encourage any council members to give you a call to meet with you. I found our open, wide-ranging discussion very helpful and insightful, and thank you for that.
Well, you know, it's never-ending, Mayor Mars. I mean, as Matt points out, I mean, there's, it's a balancing act all the way through. I mean, I knew Matt when that beard of his was, you know, the right color. He remembers me when my hair wasn't as gray either, I suppose.
Right.
But, you know, the thing is, we're all on the same team here, and I think we're all rowing in the same direction. And, you know, it isn't over until it's over. And, you know, clearly, any dialogue or any time anybody on the council or any staff person wants to come in, we're more than happy to sit down, have a cup of coffee, you know, walk through, talk through, and try to figure out what we can do to make something happen. So the door is always open, and I think Councilmember Lehman knows that over the years we've known each other. You know, Matt, I've never ducked one of your bullets yet.
Covering my beard.
Mr. Jaffa?
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Murray Lewis? Yeah, I did a quick breakdown of your numbers. You were saying that on your chart here, it says almost $5 million in 2015 to 570 households. That's almost $8,500 a household. That breaks down to $700 a month just to help pay rent. That's a pretty hefty rent.
And again, you know, the program is the program, the way it's set up at the federal level. And there are families out there that, and we have families that pay very little, and we have families that pay a lot more than others. So there are people out there that are right on the line. I mean, if you're just taking an average there, that doesn't really quite give you the full picture. What I would recommend, Counselmember Lewis, is for you to maybe spend an hour or two with our Housing Director, Julie Seagirt, at the CDA, and she can walk you through probably more carefully, or our Finance Director, too, so you get a better fix for those numbers, rather than taking a whole number and throw a bunch of households into it and come up with something.
Yeah, I'll try and make an appointment.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, Bill Joffe. We've enjoyed your presentation, and the information is great to have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move ahead then to 8A2, our monthly financial review, and Mr. Nelson will present.
Thank you, Mayor Councilmembers. Good evening. Mr. Looney told me before the meeting started that the rain was going to last for two hours, so it looks like I got about an hour and 15 minutes left to hold your attention here, so.
Hey.
Brought an umbrella. So thank Mr. Looney for that one. I only have about 15 or so slides here, so it'll go quick. For you tonight is our financial review for the month of June. Can't believe it's already halfway through the year, but we are at that point. I gotta start the slideshow here. Here we go. So obviously, June 30th, we're at the midway point. The 50% of the year is complete. We've gone over this in previous months, is that, you know, our revenues and expenditures aren't always recurring evenly on that end of it, so we always got to take our financial report with a grain of salt, knowing that we have spikes, peaks in values throughout the year, when we receive money and when we pay out money and such like that. So here we go. So here's a breakdown of the revenues for the month of June and year-to-date. I've talked about, to this point in time, we hadn't received any of our tax proceeds yet, and that our revenues were behind pace up until the June timeframe, and we actually did receive our first-half tax settlement late in June here, and so that has now bumped up our total revenues to about 55% for the midway point. So we're right in line with where we had projected things to be with our budget to actual. And you can see that highlighted item of 8.8 million is the actual tax proceeds that came in in June. Couple other items to point out, licenses and permits. I mentioned that last month that they were at a, I think we were at about 85% last month or so. We are now at 100% halfway through the year, so we have now exceeded, or slightly exceeded, our budget projections for the licenses and permits. That indicates that building activity is still proceeding rapidly. Couple other items to note, intergovernmental revenues, you know, that has a red downward pointing arrow here. That number is a little bit lagging compared to where we should be at the June timeframe. That's due in part to some of our state aids, specifically our police and fire state aid that we receive in October usually each year. That's about $600,000, the amount of revenue that we receive from them. So that plays a big part into our total intergovernmental revenues for the year. And then miscellaneous revenues as well, this is about 39%, so it's just under that 10% plus or minus variance that we've kind of set. And that's due to, our June interest isn't posted yet. We're early in July. We've still got some June journal entries yet to do. And then we also have our League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust. We receive usually a dividend check at the end of the year in December timeframe for that, and that goes into this line item as well. So I think that was about $120,000 last year, so that makes up a good chunk of that budget line item right there. So that's about it for the revenues. We're on track, slightly ahead of track at this point in time for half the midpoint. Moving on to the expenditure side. Moving on to the expenditure side. I've been kind of hounding, not hounding the council over the past couple of months, but you guys' budget had been kind of above that target percentage for each month since we'd started doing this process, and now, as it kind of shows, now we're back in line at that fifty percent mark, and that was due in part to the council, mayor and council division having big expenditures that are paid for at the beginning of the year. And now with that smaller budget, it's fallen back in line with the rest of the city on that end of it. And with a kind of a grain of salt, I should point out that the Finance Department is actually above that fifty percent mark at this point in time, and that is due to the June actuals, which is due to a two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollar payment to... Thank you, Mr. Lehman, or Councilmember Lehman. That's a payment to Scott County for our 2016 assessing services. We pay that once a year, and that came out in June timeframe, so we're slightly above that. We would fall back as the months progress. Should also note that transfers, other financing sources towards the bottom here, we have transfers in and transfers out. The transfers in are from the sewer and stormwater funds, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars each. Those are budgeted transfers each year. We do those once, one time a year via journal entry, and we did those now in June as well. And the same goes for the transfers out, and that two point one million is made up of one point two to the capital improvement fund, nine hundred thousand to the EDA special revenue fund with five hundred thousand of that for the downtown 101 corridor, and the remaining four hundred thousand for operations and revolving loan as well. So that's what makes up those amounts. Other than that, everybody else, every other department division is in line with where we should be at this point in time. We're actually underspent at this point, so things are looking good in that direction. So I take any questions you have on that before we move on to the next?
Questions?
No.
Thank you.
All right. Now for the fun part, not that that wasn't fun, but since we're, we had our auditors here last month, so we're looking back at the 2015 calendar year, and now we'll be shortly moving into budget season. We actually kind of are already moving into budget season, but really want to get a grasp on our fund balances and really what are appropriate fund balances for each fund type. Last month, our auditor reviewed the general fund, our fund balance policy. We went over that pretty in-depth, and we're right in line where we, the State Auditor's Office recommends, and that's good. So tonight, we're going to be reviewing that fund, but we're also reviewing the special revenue funds, debt service funds, enterprise funds, et cetera, so. So what I also will provide, we do actually have, the city has a fund balance policy slash equity policy for all the city fund types as well. And so before we do that, we should maybe take a step back and just understand what fund balance and fund equity is. So fund balance relates to governmental funds, and governmental funds are the general fund, special revenue fund, capital project funds, debt service funds. And those are basically funds that have kind of a dedicated funding source or have potentially taxes tied to them, and really are accountable from a flow and control of money standpoint. And then our equity standpoint, what fund equity is, it's similar to the private enterprise fund. So that's our sewer fund and our stormwater fund. Those are run like a private business. They have depreciation, they have capital assets, and that's why it's an equity versus a fund balance side of things. And then our internal service funds are run very similar to those enterprise funds. They have the same characteristics. They have capital assets, they have depreciation, long-term debt, et cetera. So this is a lot of words, so we'll summarize it quickly here. But our general fund, which makes up a majority of this, and is kind of the focal point of most governments. The general fund is what our focus is. It's kind of how we measure our government, but there are other pieces of the government that make up the city as a whole. So the fund balance policies applies to our unrestricted fund balance, which is the money that is available to use to pay our bills. It's not part of, like, an assigned fund balance or something that's an inventory or, you know, reserved for inventory. We can't use inventory to pay for our bills. We can only use cash that's on hand. And so our target level, then, is that forty to forty-five percent of our expenditures. And that's why we've been kind of talking about these financial reviews on a monthly basis, that we saw with the taxes coming in just in June now, that we needed four, five, six months of reserves to cover those, that timeframe from January to June until we got our tax proceeds to pay our bills moving forward. So that's a good, comfortable level. The State Auditor's Office recommends thirty-five to fifty percent is a range for a general fund. And our bond agencies as well, bottom rating agencies, really like to have a higher balance here. I mean, the more, the better, but obviously, there's a balance between what's appropriate balance as well, too, on the city side of things. So our targeted balance is forty to forty-five percent, so we're right in that, in that range of thirty-five to fifty of what the State Auditor's Office recommends. And we do have a policy that the council can spend down that appropriation in emergency situations, and if that target amount falls below that forty percent threshold, we can get that back up over a three-year timeframe up to get it back into that forty to forty-five percent range. And then annually, if it exceeds forty-five percent, we can transfer then funds to other areas as deemed necessary, and we've done that the last couple of years. So moving on to the special revenue funds, special revenue funds have a dedicated revenue source by definition. So there would be, for instance, our forfeiture funds are, have a dedicated source. So that is forfeiture money that's coming in is going out to pay for forfeiture-related activities. So that is a specific revenue source, and that's really what special revenue funds should be formed around. And so they don't necessarily have a range that is appropriate. The range is appropriate for the type of activity that's taking place. So if you have money coming in on a consistent basis, you don't need necessarily a big fund balance. And if you only have money coming in once a year, you may need a bigger fund balance. So it's really dependent upon the type of activity taking place. Debt service funds, these funds shall maintain sufficient fund balance to provide for timely payment.
Question?
Yeah, Darren, on that forfeiture funding, so the forfeiture money can only be used to process forfeitures?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis, it can be used for any forfeiture-related activity. So if they're, if it's a training event, or if it's to buy equipment, or forfeiture, forfeiture money has really strict guidelines of what it can be used for. So the Police Department knows exactly what's eligible to be used for forfeiture and what's not. And so that's why it's a special revenue fund, because it can't be used for anything and everything. It can't be used to pay for finance-related activities. It's specifically to forfeiture-related activities.
What is the breakdown on who gets what for forfeitures?
Between, like, federal, county, city? That's a good question. I might have to talk to the Police Department.
Okay, that's fine.
I thought it was a... So if, for the people at home, I think Chief Tate said that ten percent goes to the state, forty percent to the city, and forty percent to the county.
Fifty percent to the county.
Fifty percent.
Prosecutors.
Fifty percent. Fifty percent. There you go.
Good. Close enough. Thank you. Thanks.
Very good. Good question. So debt service funds, getting back to our fund balance policy, needs to have sufficient funds available to pay your debt service. We pay our debt service February 1st and August 1st each year. February 1st is when we make those principal payments and interest, and then August 1st is when we make traditionally just the interest side of our payment. So you need to have a fund balance at year-end enough to cover, at December 31st, enough to cover that February 1st payment coming up. And then capital project funds, there are no fund balance requirements for this fund, and that's a city policy. And really, what you're doing with capital project fund is you don't want to look at it on a year basis. You want to look at it over, you know, a five- to ten-year timeframe. And specifically, we do that with our CIPs, that we look at it over a five-year timeframe. And with a lot of projects, they are multi-year projects. They aren't just one-year projects. They may take two, three, four years, depending on the time that they start doing some of the plenary planning and such. And so making sure that your fund balance is appropriate at those out-years, making sure that the end of each of those out-years that you have an appropriate amount of fund balance available to handle the upcoming projects is appropriate. Your enterprise funds, these are funds that have, shall have sufficient equity and liquid assets to provide three to five months operating costs and to have at least as much amount of accumulated depreciation. So in terms, so what that means is that for our operations, we get money from Shockley Public Utilities, handles our billing each month for our sewer and stormwater billing. So we have money coming in each month to cover operations. But for our reserves, we also have capital projects that take place out of those funds. And so to maintain that infrastructure, because we have a lot of infrastructure that you can't see. It's all under the ground, basically, especially when you talk sewer, is that there's a lot of costs there that we will need to maintain, update, and eventually reconstruct. And so our policy here is to have that accumulated depreciation, so each year you have your asset. So if you have a ten million dollar lift station, and it's been depreciated for five years, so you maybe have, you know, two million dollars in depreciation, so that we would have enough cap, enough cash in place to cover that two million dollars. So when we get to the end of that life cycle, we will have ten million dollars in hand to replace, refurbish, handle that infrastructure replacement. And that's a pretty aggressive, pretty aggressive fund balance policy, but that's, you know, we're sitting in a good position to be able to do that. And then internal service funds shall have a sufficient equity to smooth out the peaks and valleys of major expenditures over the long term, provide full funding for employee comp seat absences and other post-employment benefits. And here again, our major internal service funds handle a lot of those capital equipment, buildings, park reserve, et cetera. So we want to treat those very similar to the capital project funds. So to get away from some words and to show you some graphs here. Here's the general fund, and this depicts basically a fund balance floor, which is the column, the left-hand column of each year. And then there's a fund balance ceiling, which is the right-hand column of each year. And basically, that's that forty percent of expenditures and the forty-five percent of expenditures as the ceiling. And the blue column in between is your actual fund balance. And so you can see that, that is, for the last three years or so, that's been kind of bumping up against that forty-five percent cap or so, and it should be, because we've done some transfers to transfer funds at the end of the year over to our capital improvement fund, for instance, and such like that. So our fund balance really doesn't mirror that cap or that ceiling of forty-five percent within the general fund. And the left-hand side, you can see, is the actual dollar amount. So at the end of 2015, we were just about, just under ten million dollars for an actual fund balance, and that's... And then the line here is the actual forty-five percent of where we were at compared to our expenditure budget. The special revenue funds, and this is combining all the special revenue funds into one group here. So this isn't splitting out the three, four different special revenue funds that we have. This is a combination of all our funds. And as you can see, there is a big drop in our fund balances, the percentage of expenditures, and also with our fund balance dropped in 2014 and 2015. And that is due to our transportation, moving over to Minnesota Valley transport, or to Minnesota Valley Transportation. So we no longer house that operation within the city. That's no longer a city operation, and that had a big fund balance, a lot of operational expenses and such like that. And so the main...
Darren, on this one, usually when these charts go down heavy or up heavy, I always ask a few questions.
Yeah, absolutely.
Transportation piece. But moving forward, what, this is just going to become, I know this is several funds together, but the days of having a two-plus-million-dollar fund balance are over for that, right? This will be more consolidated and just be a smaller situation.
Yeah, the special revenue funds within the city of Shockley are really now just a small sliver of the total operational side of things. The EDA is the main special revenue fund now, and so some of the funds that we've been transferring over to there have made it the main portion of the special revenue funds. But, yeah, for the foreseeable future, for right now, that...
Councilmember Lehman?
Want the transportation piece, this be just a pass-through? The revenue comes in, it turns around, and goes back out as our share of the consortium of MVTA?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lehman, we are now, we don't have any pass-through now. Now it all goes directly to MVTA, so we don't have, we don't see any money coming in or money going out.
So our allocated transportation dollars don't even come here now? They're going from, straight over?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep. So in the past, we would have had money coming in from the state, and then our operational expenses, which I'm not sure, this was before my time, what exactly that was, if we were passing that on to somebody else or to the county or to MVTA or ourselves, for that matter, so.
We were paying Schmitty's and Sons to maintain our buses.
Sure, okay.
Other questions, at least for at this point? If not, continue, Darren.
Here's the debt service comparison, and this is, again, all the debt service funds. And we have a fund for each bond that we have issued in, that's active at this point in time. So these are all the active bonds that we're paying payments on. And I know we did have a refunding, and we've paid off some debt over the last few years as well, too, so our fund balance has been decreasing, which makes sense. That's a caveat that now it'll have to increase a little bit when we have, or not a little bit, but it'll go back up the other direction when that community center bond is recognizing this graph the next year. But at your point, at 2015, you are...
Oh, Councilmember Lewis?
For this year and next year, what do you see the increase being in debt service funding?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis, I was just working on that last week a little bit, just trying to try to size the budget a little bit. It's hard at this point. I don't remember exactly offhand, but I think it was, and please don't hold me to it, but I think it was going to be right around a million or so of increased debt service. Or increased tax, potential tax levy, given franchise fees go where we hope them to go, or staff hopes them to go on that end of it, and debt service coming off in the near future as well, too. So we're still, I'm still working on trying to size those up, and we'll be coming back to the council with that information.
So if it wouldn't be for franchise fee, hopefully, coming in, we'd be looking at probably over two million dollars in debt service.
Yeah, I think the debt service payment's about two point three, I think, annually on that.
We got the sheet a couple of weeks ago from Bill Reynolds and debt service in a memo, so. Yep, and they're looking at that, so the debt service will go up, and then obviously discussing possible, you know, franchise agreement as we move forward here, so.
Right. Here's your capital project funds, and as we mentioned in the policy, we don't necessarily have a fund balance policy or what's an appropriate balance on this, but it is kind of nice to compare it with the other funds as well. As you do see a big spike here in 2012, and so I dug into that a little bit, because I'm like that, maybe the numbers are wrong. Maybe I didn't do something right there. And so I went back and looked, and 2012, we didn't have much for capital outlay. We only had about two point two million dollars worth of projects in 2012 compared to all the other years shown on this graph, which averaged out to about six and a half million dollars or so. And so that's why our fund balance kind of grew that year, and it showed that we had, you know, four hundred and fifty percent of our fund balances, the percentage of our expenditures, because our expenditures were way down that year compared to the other year. So it was kind of an anomaly, from what I gathered. So here's the sewer fund, and so I put both the equity ceiling and the equity floor in here. The ceiling is obviously the orange line, and the line below it is the floor. And your actual unrestricted net equity, then, is the blue line. And as you can see, those two intercepted in 2014, and now the actual net equity for 2015 has fallen below the floor. It's not necessarily bad. We look at this as a snapshot in time, so we're looking back five years, looking at this. What we don't see is the projections going forward, and that's something that I want to work on during this budget cycle as well, is to try to get at least a ten- or twenty-year projection out there of what our rates are, what our quasi-capital needs are, and really to see what that line does over time. Does it, we increased rates this year at the beginning of the year, and we'll probably have to increase rates coming up as well, too, but...
Councilmember Lehman?
Does this take into consideration the rate increase in 2015?
It would take into, because it, I don't know if there was a rate increase in 2015. In 2016... In 2016, there was a rate increase.
It was either 2015 or very early 2016.
It was January 2016, there was a rate increase.
Okay.
So this doesn't take into account that.
All right.
So that'll, and we hadn't increased rates in a while, from what I gather, if I recall correctly, on that end of it. But we've also had quite a few expenditures in line, or capital expenditures as well, that help, that really increases the ceiling and the floor as well. It's really that depreciation that drives that. And really, you're sitting with $12 million in cash on hand, which is a very healthy fund balance for the sewer fund on that end of it.
Oh, but when I looked at this one, too, I want to look into the future, because I know there's known expenses. Sewers last certainly a long time, but your ongoing street reconstruction, all those things, and it looks healthy here. And I saw that blue line, I went, you know, short-term trend, maybe. But you're right, you need to tack on 10 or 15 and make sure that's just, you want them like the other two lines, about as steady Eddie as you can go.
Absolutely. And that's what, I had done that in my previous city as well, kind of went out and did 20-year projections. And it's tough to guess, to me, what's going to happen.
I agree.
But at least it gives you a feeling for where you're at. And what we concluded is that we were issuing debt every other year to cover basically some-
Right.
-capital that wasn't necessarily big capital, and-
Would this have anything to do with extended reconstruction projects we did in the past few years?
Oh, absolutely. It would have to-
We had people petitioning us to fix the sewers.
Pretty aggressive, yeah, street reconstruction the last couple of years.
Absolutely. And talking with Mr. Looney as well, is that our sewer system really is in pretty good shape, really comparative to the metro.
Oh, right.
The metro in that, you know, we don't necessarily see a number of great, great big projects down the line, is that we have a lot of the sewer lines lined on that end of it. And we're sitting in a pretty good position to get that blue line to curve back up and run concurrent with the other lines.
Councilmember Lehman?
Well, and I was just going to say that the cared-in-place projects that we started doing the last couple of years, moving this line farther out, and the life expectancy of that compared to the cost-benefit ratio, I mean, that's a huge asset.
Absolutely. Spend today, today's dollars to-
Well, it's a huge asset, because the cost of it is less than the total rebuild, yet the longevity expectations are there. So that's a win-win all the way around the block.
Absolutely.
Bruce?
Yeah, just, Mayor, members of council, just want, we are kind of getting pretty close, and I was talking to Mr. Nelson, pretty close to being done with ripping out sewers. I mean, we've gotten to the point where we don't have that many. So pretty much in the future, if we go out 20 years, for sure, maybe five to seven years, you're going to see more street reconstruction, which are just street reconstructions, no utilities. So you're going to probably see those type of projects versus the full-scale recons, which Mr. Whitey knows takes a lot of effort, fight a disruption.
A lot of dirt being moved.
You know, if we can get away from those, that's a good thing.
Right. Continue, thank you.
Very good. So moving on to the storm drainage fund, stormwater fund. Here we can see that that blue line, that top line, is that unrestricted net equity, and the other two lines that are running parallel are that three- and five-month of operating expenditures, and your accumulated depreciation again as well. And you can see that the blue line is getting closer to those, the intersecting. But here again, we'll do some projections, to those 10- and 20-year projections, to see where we're at, and make sure that we can keep those lines pretty, pretty close together on that end of it.
And this includes a holding pond maintenance as well, long-term maintenance. So I know other cities around the metro have, are struggling a little bit with this, about the, what they thought the cost was, and then the sediment and digging that out and trying to make it happen. And so watching, this one actually looks fine for now, but-
And stormwater is kind of probably your more, and Mr. Looney can probably attest to this, is you get more potential regulation coming down the line than you do on the sewer end of the side of things. It's that you have some more unknowns that they impact this.
There's questions for Mr. Looney. I've noticed some of the stormwater ponds are being treated. Their rim is red. Are they taking the vegetation back to zero?
Yes, we're going, trying to create more, some of our ponds, major ponds, a, what do we call it, buffer, buffer strip. So we basically had to get rid of all the unwanted vegetation, and we're starting over. So we're trying to do some pilot project where we can actually improve the water quality of our ponds, as well as the looks, so we don't get some unwanted vegetation. So we're trying that in Emerson Pond, and just about five or six ponds, we're going around doing that for.
Yeah, I've noticed, I just was curious what the reasoning was.
And just to add to what Mr. Nelson says, too, some of those regulations, because we have major outlets to the Minnesota River, could be high buck items. So having a financial, good standing in finances is, you know, we would be good to do that versus where some cities may have to bond and whatever else, whenever that regulation comes down.
Right. Thank you, continue.
Yeah, and it should be noted that our enterprise funds have no, we don't have any debt in our enterprise funds. And that isn't, that isn't common necessarily either, especially a city our size, so.
Situation fluid.
Moving on to internal service funds, here we have, our unrestricted net equity is kind of dipping off, and you can see that that dipped off in 2014. And that was due to, we took 20% reductions in our internal service charges for our rents for building and for equipment, and I think our park assets, park asset fund as well. And so that was obviously a negative to that fund for maintaining its stability on that end of it. I think we brought it back 3% last year, or for this, this current year. I am looking at the budget this year and trying to, I'm doing kind of a what-if on the beginning and of it, to fully restore those charges, to make sure that we have funds available to get our equipment and our buildings, get those funding levels back up to where they, they need to be. We'll see what the end has to come out, and see what kind of impact that has with the overall city as a whole. But if we can start to move that, that 20% decrease that had taken place a couple of years ago, if we can try to eliminate that either in this upcoming year or in the next couple of years, we should be able to turn that, that bottom line then back up to meet our ongoing capital needs on, from the-
Need to build that back up, and there was a 20% reduction in the rent from the buildings?
From the buildings and from the capital equipment and such like that. And it's more so on the capital equipment, is that, you know, some of it doesn't have the lifespan of like a building would have. So you, that fund would be affected a little bit more quickly than a building fund that has a life of 50 years versus a police car of three years or four years, so.
Councilmember Lehman?
When you take building fund dollars to build a building, doesn't it lower that blue line? Even though that's what, even though that's what the purpose of the fund is for.
It absolutely does, good point. And, but, let's see. So we did take some funds that are, you're in transfer, I think we did take some out of the building fund, and moved over for City Hall, and moved over to the capital project funds where City Hall is at. So that would affect that as well, too, so.
So what I'm pointing out is, as you plan these future government buildings, whether it's a city hall, or a fire station, or whatever it might be, if you're using the building fund for that purpose, you almost have to expect to see these drops and back up and drops and back up.
Build it back up.
Because that's what it's for.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. You're exactly right. That's exactly what it's for.
One of the, also, if you're looking at revenue that goes into this fund, if something was cut back by 20% too, and it has, you're spending it. But then, if you're not getting as much revenue from that rent item, that, you know, that can impact, can actually make it wider than it is.
Right. Yeah, so for a $25,000 police car, you're only charging $20,000 on what you're going to come up, you know, five short on that end of it, so.
I think so.
So that's all I have here. It is important to note that those fund balances all are just a snapshot in time. It's taking a picture at December 31st and comparing it from year to year. And so that's, you got to take into account those past balances, and we really want to look forward into the future, too, to see where we're at going forward, to make sure that our stability and viability for each of those funds is there. So we'll make sure that we address those as the budget goes through progression here in the next, this year, and along with upcoming years as well, so.
Well, thank you for that. I, that's pretty good in-depth, these monthly meetings that we've had, in-depth on some points. You know, our, this, you know, just shows that our community is healthy. We have a conservative base. We're very sound. Obviously, our tax rating went up last year, so very conservative, and I hope we continue the line, because it certainly shows in the numbers, so. Thank you, Darren.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers.
All right, let's move to number nine. Wow. Liaison and administrator reports, and I think I started down there. We'll go over here from our administrator report, start with tonight.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple items. First of all, I'd like to talk to you a little bit about, Mr. Nelson and I are starting a new thing this year in regards to listening sessions, before we start the budget process, to try to get input from the citizenry. So we will have two of those coming up. The first one will be at, from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Wednesday, 13 July, at Fire Station Number One. The second meeting will be at the library from 8:30 to 9:30 on Thursday, 14 July. And just so everybody understands kind of what this is, we'll take about 10 to 15 minutes to talk a little bit about budgets in general for the public, so they can kind of understand what it is that we're beginning to do. And then we'll talk a little bit about some of the interesting challenges that we'll have this year. And then finally, turn it over for questions, and then input from the public. So hopefully, we have a good turnout. I've always done these as part of my budget, budgeting process, and I can tell you that, that you'll be surprised at some of the really good ideas that are out there. And it just takes somebody willing to listen to and see if they can be implemented. So this is the first time we're going to do this, and we will continue to do that as part of our restructuring of our budgeting process. The second thing to bring up is that on the 26th of July, we would like to have a special meeting to talk about the CIP budget. What I will do is just simply throw that out now, and then if there is any issues, you can email me, or we can set the date tonight, whatever you would like to do. But of course, we'll still have to go through the notice requirements. But that will be a workshop specifically dealing with the CIP budget.
Is anybody conflicted with that date? You can set that date tonight, then?
The 26th?
Yes, sir, the 26th of July. And I presume we would do that at 7:00.
I have head judge training in this facility that night. If you're willing to meet in a different room, I don't know, it's something that we have to discuss, but I've got 20-some head judges that are coming in for training that night here.
Counsel, if we may have an opportunity to reschedule that, I'll take a look at that and get back to you. We'll, we'll discuss it at the staff level.
Doesn't have to be on a Tuesday, though, if we call a special meeting ahead of time, correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
Wednesday.
Wednesday would be better, okay. Let's have staff work on that.
We'll do that, and I'll send an email out, and, yes, sir.
The public meetings that you're going to have, where we publish those, so people are aware of it?
Yeah, well, we will publish those, they're not actually meetings per se, but we'll put, we'll put-
Listening sessions?
Yeah. We will be putting that information out through our internal and external medium.
I've seen some notice already.
Yeah. And then finally, I just provided all of you a copy of our, after the collection day report for cleanup day, that was held on April 30th of 2016. It's something that Public Works has been working on for many years. And it's pretty amazing when you see some of the stats that come out of that particular day. Great job all the way around by Public Works on their efforts there. So, thank you all.
Thanks.
And that's it, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mokel?
I had the SDA, our final, one of our final planning sessions for the festival on Friday night at 7:00 on Thursday night. So we're getting ready and everything in line for Friday. So everyone come down.
Yeah, just, that's all I had to report, was about the International Festival, lots of food trucks and free bouncy rides for the kids. I said free at no additional charge, so some great entertainment. So Friday night, starting at 5:00 to 9:00 p.m.
Let's see, I went to the chamber board meeting on June 26th, June 22nd. There were a lot of discussion on the franchise agreement. And then I just received several emails about fireworks, and, you know, let's try to enjoy the fireworks, and we did. Some did. Let's be safe and secure, but be considerate. I think a lot of discussion around that. I did review the building permit fee memo that Bill Reynolds put out a week ago or so, little recap comparing our community to others, and very, I think, I thought our fees compared to those other cities were very reasonable. Article, obviously, in the Star and Tribune on $19 jobs that we worked on at our last meeting, and now an article on the pod housing, or granny, they call them, and we might see that before our council coming up. SDA, Friday night, that's all I have.
I attended the township meeting, which Mayor was there, and so was staff. And the focus was on infrastructure, all of the infrastructure. It was, met council, did a presentation on sewers and capacities, and what the future treatment center locations could potentially be. Spuck was there, talked about water elevations. Our staff was there talking about our sewer systems. One of the issues that caught my attention was the different water pressure elevations and the looping requirements. And to go back under 169 is actually going to need a reducer, pressure reducer valve, because the other side of the highway is less of a pressure than the first. So it was, it was all infrastructure. It was pretty heavy-duty stuff, so it's, it's a lot to put your head around. The township, you know, and folks were there, they listened, asked their questions. We all asked our questions. And, you know, they, they asked to pretty much just soak it in, because it was just a couple hours of a lot of information. So that's soaking in, and we're going to get together again and continue on. So it was a good meeting.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Lewis?
Yeah, I went to MVTA's monthly meeting. They discussed the bus service from All America to Marshall Station, the one they're working on for all the businesses in town. Amazon's totally on board. They have dollars on the table already. The SMSC is very interested. They just want to see some of the kinks worked out yet. And they're still speaking with a number of other people, so that's going forward pretty well. And, you know, hopefully they can get things together. So that was the extent of my meetings.
All right. Okay, let's move forward. Any other business before this council? If not, Councilmember Lewis?
The fee schedule, I think we should look at that, because we're really falling behind in some of those fees compared to other cities. I mean, I think we're losing out on some dollars.
We are currently looking at that at the staff level, Councilman Lewis. It is something that we are going to be bringing back before council in the next couple of months, but we're actively looking at that. If you'll recall, we were under some constraints prior, because of a prior lawsuit. But, yeah, we are, we are in the process of reviewing that.
One thing to add to my report was, I spent another day knocking on doors for the inclusive fund, or inclusive park fund, and everybody is receiving it very well. We're moving forward on that. I did talk to Mr. Sampson's assistant, and they have agreed to fund us $5,000 a year for another three years. So that's a $20,000 donation on their part.
Very nice.
Just to get you where we're at.
Good.
Nice job, Mike, nice job.
Nice job. You bet. Anything else before this council? So I would entertain a motion, Matt?
Motion to adjourn to July 19th.
Second.
2016.
Can I have a second by Councilor Lewis? Discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much.